Good evening. Welcome to the City of Douglasville's Planning Commission Meeting. I am Francisco Artley, the Chairman of the Planning Commission. The other members of the Planning Commission are Keith Burnett, Mark Fan, and Natalie Fegan. On my left is Michael Parker, Ralph Benton, and Nathan Zachary are on my right. The staff members are Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, Susan Littlefield, our Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ryan Anderson, Zoning Administrator, Maya Jackson, Planner One, and Marcus Thompson, our Project Manager. There are a few protocol items I need to make you aware of before we start the meeting. Please listen closely on how tonight's meeting will be conducted. Keep your comments and presentation on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important to this commission to make its decision. We will not accept comments that are considered by the Chair to be a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive warning from the Chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in a request for you to leave the meeting and the premises for the evening. Refrain from any applause or comments from the audience. Only one person will be talking at a time and all comments will be made at the podium after the speaker has been recognized by the Chair. Please direct all comments to the Chair and the Commission, not to the audience or the staff. Please do not applaud or react to speakers. Speak from the audience, cheer, carry on a conversation with others in the audience, or disrupt the order of this meeting in any way. Be aware that these hearings are not a debate or an opportunity to ask questions which must be answered by any individual tonight, but are merely an opportunity to present information to the Commission. Other than the applicant, no person may speak more than once. The applicant may reserve part of his speaking time as rebuttal and may speak first and last and may use the entire twenty minutes allotted for the pro side of the application. Other than the applicant, no person may speak longer than five minutes. If you have a pager, cellphone, or other electronic device, I ask that you either power them off or put them in silent mode. If anyone wishes to speak tonight, please fill out a form available on the table up front and hand it to the staff before approaching the podium. After each case is called, we will hear first from the Community Development Director and then we will hear from the applicant or their representative about what their plans are for the property, along with any other relevant information they wish to present. The Commission members will be free to ask questions at any time before the vote on a project. Following the applicant, anyone who wishes to speak for or against the project, or just ask questions, will have an opportunity to do so. The City Ordinance restricts each side to a maximum of twenty minutes, or time may be waived at the discretion of the presiding official. If questions are raised, we may ask the applicant to speak again. Afterward, we will call for a motion and a second, have any necessary discussion, and if the matter is not tabled, we will vote to recommend approval or denial of the application. This commission is only a recommending body. The item will be heard by the Mayor and Council whether we recommend approval or recommend denial. Unless tabled, these items will be heard by the City's Mayor and Council at their legislative meeting on Thursday, December 3rd, and then voted upon by them at their meeting on the following Monday, December 7th. The Commission members have received copies of the minutes of our last meeting. Does anyone note any changes or corrections? Is there a motion to approve? A second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. The minutes of the last meeting are approved.
So just a reminder, if you all will use your iPads to make the motions as well.
Thank you for that reminder.
And I'm just waiting for two more votes from Mr. Burnett and Mr. Zachary.
Have everybody? Alright. The minutes of the last meeting are approved. The Commission members have received copies of the minutes of our last training. Does anyone note any changes or corrections? Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Make sure you push your button there. All in favor, please signify by saying aye and approve it too on your iPad. The minutes of the last meeting are approved. The first case is item 20-548. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a change in zoning from R2 Single Family Residential Detached District to O1 Office Institutional District for sixteen point one five acres at Timber Ridge Road in Land Lot 54, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 2, Application by Douglasville AL Investors. Staff will now present the item.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant is requesting to rezon approximately sixteen point fifteen acres from R2 Single Family Residential to OI Office Institutional. The parcel will be developed as an assisted living facility in retirement community with eighty-two units for assisted living and thirty-two units for memory care. The facility will be full-time operation with approximately seventy employees and a building of approximately a hundred thousand square feet. The subject property is located within a Regional Activities Center Care to Area. The Regional Activities Center Care to Area lists the OI Zone as one of its recommended land uses. If the item is rezoned, the proposed project would still be consistent with the City's future land use map. The subject property is located near the intersection of Presley Mill and Timber Ridge Road. The proposed development is consistent with the intent of the conference of plan. Changing conditions include an anticipative population growth of new senior residents and new senior residential development. According to the Atlanta Regional Commission, one in every four people living in the region will be seniors by 2040. The proposed project fits well into the City's Regional Activities Center Care to Area as it incorporates resourcefulness in site design and it is one of the underlying objectives of the Regional Activities Center Care to Area. That is all that we have.
Okay, thank you. Will the applicant come forward and state their name and address for the record? Tell us what you intend to do on this property.
Evening, everyone. My name is Joe Fowler, Post Office Box 489. I'm here with Aubrey Holmes, who is Representative of the Smith Packet Medcom Corporation. She's the Senior Development Manager, and also Daryl Ray and Tim Clark is one of the agents on this project. The application, as explained, is for the construction of an assisted living facility and it'll operate under the name Harmony at Douglasville. Our client's been in senior housing development for thirty-eight years. They've been building and managing facilities for independent living, assisted living, memory care, skilled nursing, all across the eastern United States. In fact, it operates or has developed dozens of such units in the eastern United States with locations in Alabama, Florida, Tennessee, South and North Carolinas, Virginia, West Virginia, Kentucky, Indiana, Maryland, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Michigan. Been in this business for a long time. Currently operates thirty-two facilities. It's got fifteen in the development phase, seventeen under construction, is looking at twelve other locations as possible sites. There's already one facility that they operate in Georgia. It's referred to as Harmony at Savannah, 9136 Old Montgomery Road. That offers independent living, assisted living, and memory care. The plan for Harmony at Douglasville calls for not eighty-two, but eighty-three assisted living units. Patrice, I meant to send that to you. I hope you got it. What happened was, if you look at the site plan, that looks like a U on the left-hand side arm that turned inward, so that they will be able to see down the hallway in the memory care units, they are extending that out now on the front to the left, so they can see down the hall for those memory care and see down the other direction. That bumps it from eighty-two to eighty-three, and then there will be thirty-two memory care units in that area. It's built on the sixteen point one five acre parcel that you see on the site plan and plat before you. They have the property under contract for purchase, subject, of course, to the rezoning. Plans call for a two-story building of approximately ninety-five thousand square feet with a dining room and a courtyard for each of the divisions, assisted living and memory care. You can see the amenity areas on the site plan for each of those separate areas. There'll be approximately seventy employees hired. It'll be a twenty-four hour facility. Now, everybody's aware that in the general area of the location proposed for this development, the community already has the Benton House on Presley Mill Road and the Oaks at Douglasville on Timber Ridge Drive, both of which are assisted living and memory care facilities. However, the demand for housing of this nature, as alluded to, Patrice, a moment ago, has continued to climb. And if you have any questions about that issue or other matters pertaining to the project, Ms. Holmes is here from Charleston, the company headquarters, and she can address any questions you may have. The staff has recommended approval of the application, finding it to be in keeping with the comprehensive plan, as noted, Regional Activities Center, and that it does promote the public health, safety, and general welfare. So, Mr. Chairman, that's our basic presentation. If you have questions, Aubrey can address some of those, or I'd be more than glad to respond to any you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? I guess I was just kind of wondering, because didn't last month we approve for another assistant down in Tributary? Was that assistant living?
We did approve it at our last meeting. You're correct.
I mean, I guess my concern was, how many did we want in the city?
At staff, we just process the applications and just forward them on. So we don't have a count that we're considering.
Any connection with that, Mr. Chairman? It's almost like, how many subdivisions do you need?
Right.
It's a question of market demand. Aubrey can address that specifically, because that's the question I asked, since I was involved in that zoning last month, you may recall.
Right.
And the first question I asked was, is there, in fact, the demand? And the answer is yes, and she can address that.
Good evening. I'm Aubrey Holmes. I'm with Smith Packet Medcom. The address is 34 Broad Street, Charleston, South Carolina. We have a, our process is, we have in-house market analysts who look at different areas, right now focusing on Georgia with our successful opening of Harmony at Savannah, and look at a formula that we've used for about thirty-eight years. And it's the number of adult children, the number of senior housing, or number of seniors' housing income. We look at the hospitals, and then we also look at the competition. And we actually have studied the competition that is open. Benton House is basically full. I think they're at like ninety-eight percent. So they, and it's just kind of as move in, so they're doing wonderful. We've also looked at the Oaks, who just recently opened, and even with our pandemic right now, they have a great occupancy. They, I think, within like thirty days had, you know, over twenty residents already moving in or something wonderful. They were doing very well, and we continue to check on those. So we look at all those formulas and all those measures to see an indication of the need in the areas, just how quickly a building is filling up, and the Oaks seem to be surpassing a lot of other competitors that we've seen. So they take a look at all that. And in addition, we also hire a third-party market analyst who will go in, they'll study the market as well. We are very conservative, so we really try to err on the side of caution more than being too aggressive. So we have found that there's a need here. We found that there's a market, and we'll continue to make sure. But our business is to fill up the building and to take care of seniors, so we definitely need a need.
Thank you.
So this harmony would be literally within walking distance of the Oaks and Benton House?
If you can make it up that hill.
Okay. And so, I know the gentleman said that you are also considering other areas in the state. Are those other areas you're considering within Douglasville?
No, no. The twelve new markets that he did mention are all along the east coast as well. We are looking at a couple others in Georgia, but about an hour away or more.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. So are you guys dealing with anything? I'm just clarifying, are you guys under contract for the parcel across the street as well, or is it just this one parcel?
It's just the sixteen acres that separates the rest of it by Timber Ridge Drive.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the project, ask questions, or make comments? Please come forward, tell us your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak other than in favor of this project? Please come forward and tell us your name and address. Do I have a motion regarding this application?
Mr. Chair, I motion that we approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there any other further discussion?
Can you all please put that in your iPads?
Alright. All in favor of the motion by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes and the application is approved. The next case is item 20-547. Holding a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit by, permit for warehousing or indoor storage for property zoned LI, Light Industrial District, being forty-three point nine nine seven acres at 1551 North River Road in Land Lot 172, District 1, Section 5, Parcel 15, Application by CHI Acquisitions LP. Staff will now present the item.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The applicant requests a special land use permit for two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot rear loader warehouse on a property zoned Light Industrial, being approximately forty-four acres on North River Road. The subject property is located off Riverside Parkway at fifteen fifty-one North River Road. In January 2020, the subject property was rezoned from PUD, Planned Unit Development, to LI, Light Industrial, in the Quality Growth Overlay District with special conditions applicable to business light industrial property as set forth in the New Manchester zoning approvals, as originally approved by Ordinance O04-55, and as amended by Ordinance O057517 and Ordinance O08062. The request is pursuant to Ordinance 0-08-062, which mandates the special land use permit is required for a warehouse-type use, uses, even though the subject property is zoned Light Industrial. Based on the staff's determination, the proposed facilities will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. Staff has not received any evidence that the proposed project would substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. Warehouse logistics is a permitted use within the Light Industrial District. The proposed facilities will be developed within the existing Riverside West Business Park. The proposed development is a relatively small warehouse. A traffic study was completed on behalf of the applicant, which indicated that the potential new truck traffic would not have a significant impact on the area. The traffic analysis indicated that there may be two to five new truck trips per hour in each peak hour from and to each direction on Riverside Parkway when the development is in fully occupied. The applicant indicates that measures will be taken to minimize potential traffic concerns. The proposed use is allowable in a Light Industrial District with a special land use permit.
Okay, Ms. Williams, I think that was my biggest concern, was that it was already approved LI with special conditions, and now they have to come back and request a different type of special conditions?
Right. They had to get a SLUP. It is in reference to the older ordinances for the DCD, New Manchester, Tributary, those were grandfathered in with that rezoning that you referred to, and so they have to have a SLUP. So that did not change with that rezoning. They have to have a SLUP in order to get the warehouse, to build the warehouse.
But what was it supposed to be before, when it was approved? What was proposed to go in it? Or was it just changed? Was it Storage 2 back then? Or was, when it was changed from to LI?
It was originally, it was DCD, and then when we adopted our map back in May of 2019, it went to PUD. But it also, it still had the same requirements. It was just name-only PUD. To make it a little easy for marketing, we, the city initiated a zoning to Light Industrial. So therefore, it's Light Industrial, but it still has everything that it had previously. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's a, it's a little, little more to it, yeah.
That was, that was in January, right?
That was the first of the year, correct. It should have been January or February.
And the owners agreed to that originally?
I'd say that again, I'm sorry.
The owners of the property agreed to that original rezoning?
The Light Industrial? Yes.
With conditions?
With those conditions, right.
Sorry. What were those conditions one more time?
There are a lot of conditions. If you look at your, your uploads, there are pages of them, and they are required to, for this area, Riverside West Park, they have to have a SLUP in order to do the warehouse, along with several other conditions you should see uploaded as well.
Anybody else have any questions for?
Okay, alright, thank you.
Will the applicant, applicant, please come forward and state their name and address for the record? Tell us what you intend to do on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Carl Westmoreland. My address is 3343 Peachtree Road, Atlanta. I'm here with John Bateman, with the applicant, with Crow Holdings. If you heard, this is a forty-four acre tract. It's on North River Road. It's in the East Hills Business Park, Zone Light Industrial, and under the Quality Growth Overlay. As you've also heard, because of the 2008 ordinance, a SLUP is required. As you know, that is a different consideration than if you were hearing a rezoning. They're very specific criteria, which the staff has done a good job of analyzing in their, in their report. So this is a SLUP to allow a warehouse in the LI District. The use, again, as you heard, is permitted in LI. The staff's also found that this is- Uh, the staff's also found that this is, I'm sure you've looked at the property, you, you know that there are two warehouses as you go in on North River Road. Uh, there are vacant pad sites just beyond that, all zoned, uh, LI. Uh, they've, uh, the staff has also found, uh, that it's not detrimental to any of the surrounding uses. There's a two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-square-foot warehouse that is adjacent that was approved with a SLUP by the, uh, City Council in two thousand seventeen. There's a four-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, uh, square-foot coal storage facility across North River Road. Uh, therefore, it's obviously consistent with the surrounding, uh, zonings and uses. As the staff also found, there's adequate infrastructure in the, um, in the area to support this use. Uh, John Bateman will talk a little bit more about the proposed use and, um, and the applicant in a minute. But I think it's important to understand the size of this proposal in relation to some of the others, uh, in the area and some of the others that you've considered lately. Uh, the proposal is for a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-square-foot warehouse. Uh, it's similar in size and operation to the adjacent warehouse that Rooker, as I mentioned, got approved in two thousand seventeen. It's much smaller than the building across the street. Uh, as a matter of comparison, the Mastic Car Facility at nineteen-oh-one Riverside Parkway is over seven-hundred-thousand square feet. Uh, the Key Building at eighteen-fifty-one Riverside is four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand square feet. And the two, uh, applications that you considered, uh, late last spring, I believe, uh, on Riverside were, which was also a rezoning, this was not a SLUP, but those two buildings were six-hundred-five and four-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand square feet. So, this is a much smaller building with much less impact. Uh, finally, I think it's important to look at the, uh, issue of the viability of the site for any other use. Uh, you've got a letter in your package, I believe, from the current owner. They had intended to develop it as a data, uh, center. They decided that that was not feasible. They have since been trying to market it and, um, have, have not found interest other than, uh, for wareha, uh, warehouse use by Crowe Holdings. And that's why we have the application before you tonight. So, let me introduce John Bateman to address their project.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you commissioners for your time this evening. Uh, as mentioned, my name is John Bateman and I'm with Crowe Holdings, who is the proposed developer of the project. Crowe Holdings, uh, is a privately-owned real estate company, uh, which special, specializes in the development of industrial and residential projects across the US. I office here in Atlanta and I oversee, uh, our developments here in the southeast. A few other points, uh, I'd like to point out, uh, as Carl mentioned, the site is forty-four acres on North River Road. Um, but of the forty-four acres, we're only proposing to develop eighteen acres, which is only about forty-one percent of the site. Our plan is a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-square-foot state-of-the-art rear-load building, which will cater to smaller Light Industrial users similar to the building next door. The requested SLUP is to allow for warehousing and indoor storage, which is a component of all Light Industrial businesses. Every Light Industrial business in the county and in the city of Douglasville have some sort of indoor storage and warehousing. This is the same special use permit that was received for the neighboring property in, in twenty-seventeen that was developed. Due to the size of the site and the building, the property is not developable without this special land use permit. A site and building of this size is on the smaller end of the spectrum. Smaller users in this size range predominantly move into existing buildings, uh, that are normally, uh, designed for multiple tenants. This requires the building to be built spec, which can't be done without a special land use permit in this instance. Currently, the site can only be marketed to a few manufacturing and, and industrial uses that would require much larger, larger buildings or sites larger than what this property can accommodate. Our building design is a rear-load building, which has the office areas and showroom-type space up front and then the loading docks in the rear of the facility. This design caters to users with a higher office footprint, uh, that typically, typically have a sales, a showroom, or a light assembly-type component. This is much different from a cross-dock building, which has loading docks on both sides of the building that really cater to, to pure distribution-type uses. Our rear-load configuration is the same building type as the neighboring building, uh, on River Road, which received the same special use permit. That building was developed in two thousand eighteen and was leased to three different tenants. Uh, due to concerns that have been expressed, uh, in other recent projects, we commissioned a traffic study for the development. It wasn't required, there's no development of regional impact due to the size of the building, but we went ahead and commissioned that study. Given the size and the design of the building, the project is estimated to only generate two to five new truck trips in each peak hour. It would be hard to find any industrial use that would have less truck traffic than our proposed design. And as concluded by the traffic engineer and the planning staff, uh, the development will have minimal impact to the surrounding road system and neighboring area. Uh, in summary, we are requesting the special use permit to allow the property to be developed for its only viable use, which is consistent with its Light Industrial zoning and surrounding properties. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Sir?
I have a question.
Sir? It's okay.
So, um, you said two to five per hour for every peak hour, but on the traffic study, you also see a hundred and thirty-two additional trucks. Is that correct in totality?
Uh, I'll have to grab the study, but, uh, the two to five per peak hour, that's your AM and, and PM peak hours.
And, and you know that without knowing who the vendor is?
Yeah, the-
Who's gonna move in there?
And, and a lot of, so the, normally, projects that are developed like this, all, you know, above larger projects like this, require a traffic study before even knowing the tenant. The, the traffic engineers, um, and planning staff may be able to speak to this as well. Traffic engineers u, use, uh, they have these special code that they use based on the size of the building, the type of the building, the number of, of dock doors or loading facilities, and a number of other factors that they validate from existing buildings and, and their database. It's the same type of system that GDOT uses, uh, when they're doing these type of studies.
And how many dock doors did you say it would have?
Uh, I don't have the exact dock door count. I believe it's right around forty, uh, on the rear of the building.
But a hundred and thirty-two additional trucks and then three-hundred-and-fifty personal vehicles is what the traffic study says.
I believe that's correct. I'll, I'll have to double-check.
When you say forty dock doors, you're meaning forty doors that trucks can pull up to?
Yes, potentially, and that, yes, in the rear of the building.
Cause I'm, I'm having, I, I kinda was wondering, you said two to five, uh, trucks per hour when you have forty doors?
Well, so, Mr.-
Per peak hour.
That's correct.
Yes, if you'll-
You're going on a lot of assumptions. So, I think that depending on who the vendor is, uh, they can pretty much dictate when they're gonna ship.
The, uh, the assumptions that they have to use, if you asked a, a traffic engineer or, uh, like I said, maybe planning can weigh in on this, I'm not a traffic engineer. Um, they have to use what are considered conservative assumptions that GDOT would obviously validate. The reason that we've mentioned the peak, uh, hours is because at every other hour, even with our proposed traffic counts, the levels of service at all the intersections in the nearby vicinity are a level of service of A, which is obviously the best level of service you can get. So, when you add the, the trips that they've conservatively estimated for this development, you're, you're still a little, level of service well above passing even in the peak hour.
With all due respect, there's a, a number of developments that are in the process on Riverside. Um, Riverside Parkway, either side of the road is atrocious right now, um, as far as traffic goes, those intersections, so. Thank you.
Are there any, any other questions from the board?
Would you allow, um, trucks to park on your property, um, after they've been offloaded?
There's, there's areas where they can park. A lot of times, they park up against the dock doors. Um, that's a, an area for them to park. So, yes, there is, uh, the ability for them to park in the rear of the building, uh, at, you know, when they're not being used.
Would you like to park, uh, if they were allowed?
Only if they're, only if they're associated with the building or, or a tenant of the building, they, you can't just pull up and, and park in, in the truck court. It's, it'd be a secured private building, so any, any employees of that building would be able to, but not just trucks that are wanting somewhere to park.
Are there any other questions from the board? Alright, thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the project? Ask questions or make co, other comments? Please come forward, tell us your name and your address. Is there anyone who would like to speak other than in favor of this project? Please come forward and tell us your name and address.
Planning Board, I appreciate, uh, your, your work. Last month, I came before you because, uh, my, my name is Philip Sisk, uh, nine-nine-oh-five Ardwood Greenway, Douglasville, Georgia, and I do live in Tributary. And I came before you last month in support of the assisted living facility across from our, um, one of our developments. And I supported that because I believed it was in the vision that people had for Riverside Parkway, um, in at least two thousand and eight. I've been here since two thousand and six. And, uh, there's been a vision for Riverside Parkway, um, that, that for a while was declining. And of course, Patrice did, Ms. Williams did a great job in explaining that in two thousand and eight, that was rezoned to Light Industrial from DCD with the, um, with the caveat that there would be no warehouses or distribution centers without, um, a SLUP, of course. And here, here they are asking for that. And the vision was that we wouldn't have more warehouses. The Light Industrial that it is now allows for a lot of other uses by Light Industrial except for warehouses and distribution centers. Um, I, I fail to think that a, um, center with forty, uh, doors is gonna generate two to five trucks an hour as all. I, I'd, I'd think that more was coming out. But when it was rezoned, you know, in two thousand and eight, it became kind of a hybrid Light Industrial. Conditions were put on the property that would require the SLUP to put distribution centers. And that's, you know, Cyrus One bought the property to be a data center. Well, that wasn't gonna produce a lot of traffic. And that's one of the uses that could be used for it. They decided that it didn't fit their needs, so they moved somewhere else. And now, they're interested in selling the property. Riverside Parkway, uh, has already been adversely affected on the safety and welfare of the communities that are alone on Riverside Parkway. Adding any more trucks to the road will only make it worse. I'm sure some of you have probably been down at the intersection of Riverside Parkway and Thornton Road. Gosh, you could lose a car in that hole that's there every month that they continue to fill back up. Uh, so certainly, um, this application implies that this rezoning would only add a few trucks. You know, how can they know till they know who the users are for the, the property itself? They are just wanting to build and, and then get somebody. They state that the project is designed to cater to smaller Light Industrial users of fifty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, that tend to have office sales, showroom, and light assembly. But if this rezoning is unopposed, it could become a two-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand square feet for just one user. And that would mean many more trucks. And as a skeptical person that I am, who has seen applicants mislead us in the past, why would I believe them? And how can they blindly say that measures will be taken to minimize potential traffic concerns? What measures could they give us that would minimize the safety concerns of big trucks on Riverside Parkway? Unless they find a way that a drone can pick them up and take them to Thornton or, or Riverside Park, I mean, or Fair, Fairburn Road without getting on Riverside Parkway? So, um, I just ask you to oppose this motion. And I'm in opposition to it. Thanks for your time.
Kevin McGuire, thirty-two fifty-two Bakewell Street, Douglasville, Georgia, uh, resident of Tributary at New Manchester. I'm speaking out in opposition of, to this. Uh, first off, I'd like to, you know, I, I thank the applicant for doing a traffic sur, survey. That's probably the first one that's ever been done with all the warehouses that have gone on, or have been built in, uh, on Riverside. Uh, they spoke of a number of trucks that would be, uh, going out there. That would be in addition to what's already on the road. Our neighborhood has probably tripled in size, most of, both at the riverbanks and at the Village End. Uh, that's bringing more private vehicles on that road. Um, it was mentioned, several warehouses were mentioned that were built, uh, relating to the fact that there was a precedent set. Uh, Kihei comes to mind as, uh, one that was built that, uh, during the city council meeting, the applicant withdrew their request for rezoning, only to have it several weeks later, uh, behind a closed-door session, have it approved without any public input. That was, uh, the previous administration, I want to say, did that. So, again, I appreciate the pub, uh, you allowing us to come up here and speak. Um, so, again, I am opposed to this, uh, change in zoning. Thank you for your time.
Alright, so bear with me for a couple minutes while I read. Um, it's the easiest way to kind of contain my thoughts and stay on topic. So, my name is Aleah Roberts and I reside at three-two-one-nine Blackley Old Road, Douglasville, Georgia, in the Tributary subdivision. This is conveniently just under three miles up the road from the property in question. I'd like to start my comments by emphasizing a point made in the twenty-eighteen Comprehensive Plan for the city of Douglasville. Douglasville is a unique blend of small-town charm coupled with metropolitan amenities, offering the ideal environment for startups and small businesses, offering high-tech centers, and Fortune five-hundred companies the infrastructure for growth. The standard for southern living, Douglasville is the place where innovation meets opportunity, dedicated to employees, pleasant and responsive to the community, and committed to enhancing the quality of life for both visitors and residents alike. Douglasville is the premier city in the nation to live, work, play, and raise a family. Also in the Comprehensive Plan is the notion that Riverside Parkway region is to be a mixed-use design, providing an opportunity to assure that the new growth would be in accordance with the character and neighborhood in which the development is located. There is so much additional residential, um, activity currently underway on Riverside Parkway with, as Mr. McGuire stated, our neigh, the Tributary community has tripled in size. There are three additional apartment complexes going up and in, on the Riverside corridor. Um, and this res, or this special land use permit is likely to put the nail in the coffin for any attempts at future retail and commercial that could possibly be on the way, um, if we can avoid another distribution center or warehouse and the trucks that inevitably come with it. Alignment with the Comprehensive Plan just cannot be possible if this property is given their special land use permit for warehousing or indoor storage, as it brings with it the unfortunate promise of increased truck, truck traffic on Riverside Parkway. I'll be blunt, no more trucks. No more warehouses that bring more trucks, no more trucks, period. The residents of the surrounding community have been fighting this battle for years, and it feels like one step forward, one step back. And we will continue to have to advocate for the health, safety, and well-being of our neighborhood and community, because the threat of more warehouses and more trucks wages on. Increased tractor-trailer traffic on Riverside Parkway, the natural corridor of traffic from this property, will cause an increased damage to our infrastructure, undue burden on my neighborhood, and po, pose a safety hazard to all drivers on Riverside Parkway. My community has personally had to pay the price of truck traffic on Riverside Parkway. In the past eight months, our beautiful welcome pillars in the, in the front of our community have been smashed to smithereens twice. First in October and again in December of last year. We've had a deep, we've had deep rats driven through the grass on our entranceways and knocked down our road signs, all of which bear a cost to repair. And the question begs, who is gonna have to pay that bill? The truck traffic on Riverside Parkway has reached a tipping point, and we cannot stand as a community to see another truck added to the road. Myself and fellow of my other, uh, residents are standing here in red in opposition, um, to this special- to this special land use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Watts. I reside at ninety-nine-twelve Ashford Greenway in the Village of Tributary. My wife and I have had the uniqueness to have lived in both subdivisions, both Riverside. We lived there from 2006 and about 2000 and a couple of years ago. And when we first moved in in 2006, of course, as new homebuyers, we were excited about the construction process and what was going on. And so we went and visited often to make sure, you know, the house was being done right, being built correctly, but also just to kind of take it all in and see and observe for ourselves what the conditions in the surrounding area was like. And it was lovely. It really was. It was quiet, it was peaceful. Now, mind you, the house that we built is on Dover Street. That's the first street that you come to that you turn right when you pull into Riverside Parkway. So our house backed up to the Riverside Parkway, the main road. And again, we went there many, many times and never really heard noise so much that it really was a problem. Well, ten years later, anyone who is up and down that road will tell you that the noise factor has increased ten-twenty-fold because of the amount of traffic. And a lot of it is car traffic, I understand. But when we first moved there, there were two warehouses that were below us going back towards Thornton Road. And I guess most of you understand now that between us or the Riverside Park, excuse me, the Riverside and now the Village, there are many warehouses and extra roads built to accommodate more warehousing. And all of that means more truck traffic, more potential for accidents, more interruptions, more potential for danger to occur with our community. And I think we all, when we kind of bought into the idea of living in Tributary, a special place to live, that it was with the idea that we would have protections against these kinds of things happening. The vision was there at one time. I know it got changed. But now we have an opportunity here to halt this difficult situation that we have been facing now for several years. And that is, the residents, and we could get many, many more here if we needed to, but we're hearing voice tonight to say to this panel, to this planning commission, that you guys are under a lot of stress or put in bad situations to make these important types of decisions and recommendations to the city council. But we're really wanting you to understand how important this is to us as residents and other residents that will be coming, because there are new apartment buildings that are under construction as we speak, that will bring in more people, more young people, more children, those types of things. That means potential for more problems or safety issues if we continue to have more trucks on our roads. So I'm begging you, I'm urging you to please oppose this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
So Board, have any other questions for anybody? Do I have a motion regarding this application?
Make a motion to deny item number two-zero-five-four-seven.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion by saying aye? Somebody needs to second it here. I guess I will. Okay.
You appear to have the motion to deny?
The motion before us is to deny. So can I change my, because I think we voted wrong.
I'm gonna clear the votes.
So the motion before us is to deny the project. So all those in favor of denying it, four, and then against the denial is against. So please vote. Can Mr. Parker fix his vote?
I'm gonna call for, if you'll call for an oral vote, Mr. Artley, so I can input it in the system.
Okay. I will call for an oral vote in reference to denying this application. Those in favor of denying it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, that the application is denied. I would like to remind the commission to please make sure to fill out the comment sheets for each motion, right? Yes, so we had the first one on Timber Ridge, and then we have the second one here on fifteen-fifty-one North River Road. If you'll take a minute to...
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yes.
There's a problem of mine. I voted against it, but it said I voted for it.
You voted for it to deny it, or you're against it?
I voted for, I voted to deny it.
So then you, okay, so then you were for, that's the vote.
Okay, then, okay.
The next case is item twenty-five-fifty. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a personal care home for property zone R-two, single-family residential detached, being seven-point-six-seven acres at fifteen-twenty Doris Road in Land Lot Two-twenty-eight, District Two, Section Five, Parcel Four. Application by Lon Bell. Staff will now present the item.
Chris Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven oh-one Church Street. The applicant proposes the construction of a new home to allow for a personal care home within an existing residential neighborhood. The applicant requests to care for no more than four special needs individuals. The proposed personal care home will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. A personal care home is a permitted use within R-two district with a SLUP. The proposed personal care home will be developed within an existing residential community. The scale and scope of the proposed personal care home will be nominal, thus resulting in a minimum impact on the existing community. The proposed project will be within scale and scope of the existing development and is in character with the existing transportation network. The proposed project will have a minimum effect of the existing built environment. The proposed project will not involve high-traffic volume and will have a marginal impact on the existing network. The proposed use is allowable in a R-two district with an approved SLUP. If approved, staff recommends the following conditions. The personal care home is restricted to four residents or less enrolled at any time on the subject property. There is a limit of four cars that can be parked at the subject property at any one time. The SLUP must be reviewed administratively by staff one year after approval and be reported to the planning commission. Number four, the SLUP must be renewed after a five-year period.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Williams?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward and state their name and address for the record? Tell us what you intend to do on this property.
Thank you, Chairman, Commission. Lon Bell, I live at sixty-four-seventy Cedar Mountain Road in Douglasville, Georgia. This property, I want you all to understand where it's located. We have two Doris Roads in Douglasville, and I want to be sure you all understand which Doris Road we're talking about. There's a Doris Road that's adjacent to the courthouse now. That's one Doris Road. But the other Doris Road is close to my home, which is really close to the Paulding County line. If you take Cedar Mountain Road down, North Douglas Elementary, then you turn right, that's Doris Road. And it's seven acres down there. So I just wanted to clarify in case somebody had the wrong idea of where it's located. The other thing, I was thinking today about my presentation and what to say, or, you know, and I thought about my dad, and he said, you know, you always start at the beginning. And I thought, okay, well, I'll just start at the beginning and try to keep it brief so y'all know a little bit about me and what we do and what our goal and our vision is. My wife, Lisa, is here with me. We've been in this county our life. I went to Eastside, I went to Burnett, I went to Stewart Middle School, Douglas County High School. Been here our whole life. We serve this community. When I was in Douglas County High School, interesting thing happened. I was taking graphic arts. And in my graphic arts class, you know, when the bell would ring, everybody'd go to the hallway. Well, adjacent from our room was the special needs class. Well, the special needs individuals would come out, and I just loved being around those guys. I didn't think much about it, I just had a heart for them. So I didn't think much about it. Same time, my dad had a best friend that had a special needs daughter, which I kind of grew up with. Was around her my whole life. There again, I didn't think a whole lot about it, you know, it was just part of me growing up. Moving forward, I went off and started a career, and it felt like I was supposed to be doing something else. Lisa had a career going, she felt like she was supposed to be doing something else. I won't get into the long story, but we started serving special needs when I was still, I was employed at Delta Airlines. We started serving special needs out of our personal house. And over a course of years, Lisa and I have served seventeen individuals throughout the years, just one here, one there, respite care, whatnot, in some very difficult situations. A couple were recovering addicts we tried to help. And we're successful, as far as I know today, was able to help them. But, so our heart was helping. That's what we've done. Our kids grew up in this, around this. And that's what we do. I need to clarify something. We keep talking about a personal care home, and we're really not a personal care home. We're a community living arrangement, which is different. And we're a state Medicaid provider. Back in 2005, as Lisa and I began to grow and see the vision for what, I don't know your belief, what we believe God wanted us to do and the vision of what we needed to move forward doing, we applied to become a provider for Medicaid. Got that done, but in this, back in the day, the early days, it was personal care home. But personal care homes have such a native connotation. And I want to clear up some of that for y'all today. Personal care homes have to be visited once a year by the state. That's all. That is not what we do. What we do is community living arrangements by being a Medicaid recipient for the individuals we serve. We have somebody outside our home that come monitors and make sure they're well taken care of every month. And that's at least one visit every month, and making sure the home's staying pristine the way it should be. Our philosophy is, we don't want to have a home for individuals with special needs that we wouldn't personally live in. I've used a local architect here to draw the plans for the home that we want to build. I've done a home where we've bought a home and converted it for special needs. But man, to build one from the ground up would just be spectacular for us and to help them. But Terry Miller, Miller Architect, has designed this. I've worked with them for months on end. And then we were gonna present this last year, but there was a moratorium on personal care homes. So I just sat on it, held on to it. But, you know, you're more than willing to look at that if you would like. So that's us in a nutshell. This house, you know, around three thousand square feet, give or take. We haven't got the final draft done yet. But it would just be housing special needs. It's not mental health, it's not behavioral. It's individuals with just Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, those kind of things. The need in our community is, you have no idea, you have no idea. I'm sure y'all probably know somebody that has a special needs child my age and the age a little older than me are getting where sometimes they can't take care of their children. And the parents are like, what are we gonna do? And they're looking for somewhere to put them. And having them be able to have a good home is what we want. That's what we're looking for. We just celebrated our twentieth year back last summer, not this past summer, the summer before. We had a celebration. We just enjoyed being with them. But I wanted to show y'all who we serve in just a little video clip of that, and then I'd be willing to answer any questions after that, if we can see the video, please.
Hi, I'm Lon Bell, this is my wife Lisa. We're here today, we've been celebrating our twentieth year anniversary of having the Shannon Foundation. Twenty years ago, Lisa and I felt called to do something differently, and we're both in the corporate world, decided to form the Shannon Foundation. We had a painful vacation where we went and saw programs similar to what we're doing. And we began our first personal care home, serving two individuals personally with our family. And through the time as we grew, now we're serving a hundred and ten individuals through multiple locations, we have two-day programs. And we have been doing this now for forty years, as I say today. It's just been a celebration of that. And we're just so thankful to be able to do what we do and be able to do what we enjoy. We're so thrilled with where we've gotten to and what we've been blessed to do. And we really can't wait to see where the future takes us.
That was actually found at our Hiram location. Means a lot. Your consideration, I appreciate.
Thank you, yes. Just a side note, twenty-one-year-old Chris, his last name begins with an N, has Down Syndrome. Became the first person with Down Syndrome to finish an Ironman. Two-point-four mile swim, hundred-and-twelve mile bike, and a twenty-six-point-two marathon.
No misconception about special needs. They have abilities. You know, people don't see their abilities.
Just one minute, sir. Are there any questions from the board?
I have some questions.
You do?
Bell? Appreciate what you're doing, very admirable, I can see your passion.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. From the picture, it looks like there's a house on the property now, is that right?
Yeah, so it was a ten-acre tract originally, and I split off the seven-and-a-half, thereabout, acres to do the personal care home, and that's been approved.
Okay, and you're proposing a three-thousand-square-foot facility?
It's going to be, yeah, well, facility, I don't want to correct you, I hate the word facility, because it sounds so institutional. Yeah, our goal and objective is for you to walk in that house and feel like, God, this is a really nice house. And it wouldn't be an institution feel, you know. The state's objective and our objective is, when you have special needs in the community, integrate them in the community, let them live a life like we get to live, best you can. We know there are some limitations, but that's what the house is built for. So it would be accommodating to them. But I think if you walked in it, you would think, unless you knew, you wouldn't realize, you know, there's certain things for special needs, but you probably wouldn't recognize it.
How many residents, did you say?
It won't be over four. By state ordinance and regulations, we can never have more than four individuals in a home, ever. It's always been that way.
They're there twenty-four-seven?
It is a twenty-four-seven, yes, sir.
Okay, and you'll live on the property?
No, I will not personally live on, it will be staffed. It's about two to three tenths of a mile from my house. We always, I just want it close so we can keep our hands on it. We're personally involved, as you can see, so.
Just one last question, out of curiosity, what are the alternatives for folks?
There's not. It's extremely difficult. We were, as part, the state had to shut down a lot of the institutions. And when they started shutting down the institutions, there was nowhere to go. And we were called by the state of Georgia. This name won't mean much to you, but he reports directly to the governor, Ron Wakefield. And Ron called me and asked me to go do some transitional planning with them. My wife and I traveled all over the state to help do some of this. We have integrated some of those individuals in our homes. Some of them were not a fit for us, we couldn't do. But we always get a synopsis of the individual, I'll keep it layman's term, so we know who they are, so we can build a cohesion of families. Just because you have four special needs don't mean they all need to live together. You know, personalities and things, you want to make sure they have an enjoyable life. But, yeah, I hope I answered your question.
Well, I appreciate the video, it looked like a nice celebration.
I appreciate that, it means a lot to us, thank you.
Are there any other questions from?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Go ahead. Oh, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Bell, thank you so much for helping me get clarity on what the target was for this facility or for this home. Because it is close to a school and that sort of thing, so I just didn't know where things were going with that. So I commend you, thank you very much for your efforts and.
I appreciate that. Just so you know, I've actually been in that school helping with special needs children in that school. You know, our schools still have the special needs classes. And we had one young man that was having some difficulty, and they called me. And I personally went through the summer off and on to help them with that individual. At that school, yes, sir.
Mr. Bell, I have a question. So what is the age range of the individuals?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question. So eighteen up, that's adults. Yeah, if anybody's considering an adult in the state of Georgia, that would be from the age of eighteen up.
And what's the duration?
So that, you know, typically, that's an open question. They could live their entire life. Or if they have a family member and they move away and they can get services somewhere else, the individual could be moved close to be with them. So it's kind of hard to answer that inclusively. But typically, they're there for a long time, because actually, they're building their family at that home. You know, they're roommates, they get close, they bond. And it's really difficult when one moves out on everybody. So, you know, it could be anywhere from a year to their lifetime.
And so, and it's staffed by individuals who can support their needs?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We have a pretty extensive training program that we have on staff. We have a registered nurse, an RN, that oversees everything. So, yeah, it's pretty detailed. I will tell you this, we have an accreditation. I don't know if y'all are aware of a CARF accreditation or a joint commission accreditation. Those are accreditations that are done by hospitals and some of your best nursing homes. Some of the assisted living homes, the really good ones have to be accredited. We're accredited nationally. We have a national accreditation. We've been accredited for probably fifteen, probably seventeen years now. And on our accreditation, you get scored during your accreditation process, and we've always ranked ninety percent or above. This last one, we was at ninety-eight percent. After you go through three or four of them, you can kind of drill down and really get to what you need to be focusing on. And we've been able to do pretty well with our national accreditations. It's quite expensive, it takes a week-long of surveyors coming out to all, every aspect of everything you do to see what you're doing, so.
I'll keep it quick. I am a believer as well, and thank you for doing what you're doing. I'm very passionate about special needs as well, because I have a special needs daughter. She has cerebral palsy, and our community to say that it's underserved in special needs is gross understatement, so. I appreciate what you're doing, I'm glad that the, I'm kind of familiar with this anyway because of my background, so I'm glad that the rest of the commission members got to understand the details of the square footage and use and staff and that kind of thing. But I just wanted to say I'm a big fan.
Thank you, Mr. Man, I certainly appreciate that. You know, personal care homes in Douglas County have not been the best. I'm just going to put that out there. But I'd really like to rewrite the rules for Douglas County for what we expect out of a personal care home now, moving forward.
I just had one more question. Okay, so it's seven-point-six-seven acres for the one home.
Yes, sir.
So if we say yes on this, could they build more homes on that seven-point-six-seven acres? Or would they have to come before the board? Before they built, like, let's say it goes well and they want to build another one?
Yeah, so you can't do that. I can probably answer that for you. Statues of Georgia will not allow that. You've got to be, I think, the minimum of a thousand square feet, or a thousand linear feet from another personal care home or community living arrangement, so that's not allowable. If I wanted to do another in Douglas County, I would come back to you at a different location, somewhere else. But you can't put them side by side, that's not permissible by the state of Georgia.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the project, ask questions, or make other comments? Is there anyone who would like to speak other than in favor of this project? Please come forward and tell us your name and address. Do I have a motion regarding this application?
Second?
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes and the application is approved. The next case is item twenty-five-five-one. Hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for a funeral home for property zoned R two, single-family residential detached, being two-point-four-nine acres at eighty-three-twelve Highway ninety-two, six-sixty-one, six-six-six-one Ridge Avenue and sixty-six forty-five Ridge Avenue in Land Lot Seventeen, District One, Section Five, Delta Parcel, eighteen-twenty-eighty-two. Application by Willie Watkins Funeral Home.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven-on-one Church Street. The subject property is located at eighty-three-twelve Dallas Highway, six-six-six-one Ridge Avenue and six-six-four-five Ridge Avenue. The applicant proposes a renewal of a special land use permit for an existing funeral home at eighty-three-twelve Dallas Highway. The property previously had a special land use permit which has expired. Additionally, the applicant would like to request a special land use permit for properties located at six-six-six-one Ridge Avenue and six-six-four-five Ridge Avenue. The funeral home has not been a detriment to or an endangerment to the public health, safety, or general welfare. The funeral home is within scale and scope of the existing neighborhood and is in character with the existing transportation network. The funeral home will have a minimum effect on the existing built environment. The proposed project will not involve high traffic volume. The proposed use is allowable in a R two district with a special land use permit. If approved, we ask that the special land use permit be renewed after five years.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward and state their name and address for the record? Tell us what you intend to do on this property.
Good evening, Commissioner. Good evening. My name is Willie A. Watkins, owner of Willie A. Watkins Funeral Home in Douglasville. We have been located in this county for the last fifteen years. And we have tried to serve, we have served this community very well. And doing so, the communities have well-received us well. Therefore, it calls for us now to look at how, what do we do with it? Do we let, I'm like this, I like to invest money back into my property. In order for me to invest money back into the property, I need to do a lot of renovation in it, because we have outgrown the facility that we have now. I have my manager here, Greg, if you'd like, could I?
Yes, yes, he can come up and speak, you'd like him to.
My name is Greg Ushry, eighty-three-twelve Dallas Highway, Douglasville, Georgia. I've been there for fourteen years, and we've watched the funeral home just grow beyond measures. And we try to offer a service beyond where you can get services. And Mr. Watkins have other locations, and his other locations are doing very well. So we're trying to sort of keep what he have going on far as things that they offer at his other locations. We have came there, we started off real slow, and now we have definitely outgrown the location that we're at. So we do have the property behind us. So what we're trying to do is just sort of offer the community some different opportunities, some different options. So here, so that's why we have the property behind us, far as can offer a repass facility, some different things that it's hard to go and do off-site. That we do a lot of our services in our chapel. And so by doing that, we can make offer that we can have a service in our chapel, plus offer a repass area for fellowship and after the service. So as Mr. Watkins stated, we are very community-oriented, we do a lot for the community, give back to the community, and I support the project wholeheartedly.
Are there any questions from the board?
So there's two other structures on this property. Are those for storage, are you going to?
With the present moment. Okay, at the present moment, the property that we have behind us, at this moment, we're just using it for storage. We do own the property behind us, because we haven't got any kind of, you know, we haven't moved apart the funeral home. The funeral home is sort of, Mr. Watkins is proposing that we come back later, or whatever we do to sort of build on or to enhance the size that we have there. But right now, we need it for storage, and we need it for, like I said, repass facilities and office space. So we need it for the builders behind us.
That's your plans for the other?
That's our plans, yes.
I think that's what I was wondering too, if you were planning on, like, expanding or tearing it down and building new, or?
No, we're not planning on tearing it down. No, we're just trying to expand. Like I said, we have truly, in the years of being, have outgrown the space that we're in, and trying to make sure we provide the community, the people, the clients that we serve, the best service that we can give.
So you just have, so basically you have multi-use buildings then?
Yes, yes, yes.
You also own the property next door?
We own the cemetery.
Oh, okay.
There's a cemetery then, two places just behind us.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Wait, all of these areas that are highlighted are already owned by you, correct?
Say it again, please.
All of the highlighted areas are already owned? I don't see it up there, but. Just the yellow, okay. Yeah, I'm good.
You got the answer?
I got the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, that was a clarity, some clarity I needed with that, too. The six-six-six-one and the six-six-four-five, you do currently own them? Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the project, ask questions, or make other comments? Please come forward and tell us your name and address.
Good evening, Devitrayon Caldwell, six-six-thirty-six Wood Drive, New Douglasville, Georgia. And I also, I've been employed with Willie A. Watkins here in our home for over ten years. And I also, as previously mentioned, we are community-oriented, we do a lot for the community. So if you all approve this, it would definitely greatly serve the community. So I do speak in favor of this approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak other than in favor of this project? Please come forward and tell us your name and address. Do I have a motion regarding this application?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? All right. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The motion passes and the application is approved. Thank you. The next case is item twenty-five-hundred. Hold a public hearing and consider a proposed ordinance to amend Section six-point-zero-three of the Unified Development Ordinance to revise provisions relating to the flood hazard district and to amend the definition of new manufactured home park or subdivision in Section thirteen-point-zero-two. in Section thirteen-point-zero-two in said ordinance. Staff will now present the item.
Patrice Williams, Community Development Director, sixty-seven-on-one Church Street. Uh, this is a text amendment. It was referred to the planning commission from mayor and council. That's where text amendments begin. And so they, uh, recently referred this to you. This is what we consider a housekeeping item. We received, uh, an email from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources saying that we needed to make some modifications, adjustments to the UDO that we recently adjusted. And so that ordinance that you see uploaded is in response to that email and some of the points that she made. And so, uh, we feel very comfortable with this item. So we are recommending approval, uh, for this item.
There is no applicant then?
Well, the city's the applicant.
The city's the applicant, okay. The city's the applicant. Um, are there any questions from the board regarding this?
Mr. Chair, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, uh, the flood, and I, I understand that, uh, so structures that are already built prior to, uh, an area becoming listed or identified as a potential flood, uh, area, uh, are they grandfathered in and can remain or would they have to be removed? Or does this even speak to that, uh, particular, um, point for the flood zone?
Uh, it does not speak to that, to what you're asking. Uh, all it do, all it's doing is just adding a new definition for it.
Do we have to ask for people to come forward if they speak in favor or against or? Oh, we still do? Okay. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the project, ask questions or make other comments? Is there anyone who would like to speak other than in favor of this project? Please come forward and tell us your name and address. Do I have a motion regarding this application?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Michael. Michael. Michael, yeah, push your button.
I'll lose second time.
Somebody to second it?
Done.
All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes and the application is approved. Is there anything else?
Add is that, uh, these items will not be heard this round of meetings. Typically, we do. You would hear them, was that the fourteenth and the seventeenth? But because of the holiday, we pushed this back, the meeting back a week because of the presidential election. Just not enough time to process the items. We'll go through the clerk's office, give them this little fool another opportunity to look at them as well. So these items will be heard on December third and seventh. But we do have other items that don't come before you all that will be heard on this Thursday and Monday, and they're variances. So those go straight to mayor and council. And so you don't necessarily get an opportunity to hear those, but you can always follow us if you're interested on YouTube, uh, City of Douglasville's page, or you can go to the City of, uh, Douglasville's website to look and see what's happening with those items. I think that's everything.
I make a motion that we adjourn? All in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is concluded. Thank you.